All right, the hour of six o'clock having arrived, I will call to order the meeting of our common council for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have 12 members present and civic clerk, and we have 11 members in the room. One member is joining us remotely.
Very good. Thank you, clerk. Now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and an oath of office, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have a swearing in, so I think we can all be seated. But I am pleased to report we're at full strength as a common council. We have 12 members now for our meeting, so I think we offered our congratulations to Mr. Presley probably individually, but want to state on the record and publicly, congratulations to you on your election. Really excited to be able to publicly swear you in tonight at our meeting. So with that, I'll turn things over to our clerk to administer the oath.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Presley, if you would stand up and raise your right hand, say aye and then your name.
Aye, Joy Presley.
Being duly elected as alder.
Being duly elected as alder.
Of the city of Green Bay.
Of the city of Green Bay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And if you wish to add, so help me God.
All right, congratulations. Now we'll move along to our invocation offered by Alder Hinkvis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to offer really a quote tonight from someone who I admire. Her name is Maya Angelo. She's a writer, she's a poet, major civil rights leader, and was definitely a woman beyond her time. And an invocation is something that I guess I'm viewing as something that we should leave each person with, something to think about. And under her society and culture in this book, her quote is, "When we unite in purpose, we are greater than the sum of our parts." And I look at all of the council and I look at the leaders within this room, and all of us bring something different to the table. So it's about using our skills as a team and looking forward, so.
Very good. Wise words. Thanks for sharing. With that, we'll move along to approval of minutes from the April 16 meeting. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Prophet. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Onto approval of the agenda. Motion to approve made Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder DeLee. Any amendments there? Alder Ek?
Let me try to figure that out.
Yep.
So our one is incorrect because it says that the vice chair is Alder Grant, and it should be Alder Johnson. That's the only change.
Oh, very good. Yeah, we could do that. Yes, because we're under the agenda, so. So it would be appropriate to make the amendment though, under the report.
On the agenda.
Yeah, not necessarily the agenda, so. But we will make a note of that and come back to it. Any amendments to the agenda itself? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Onto my report here. Again, just wanted to reiterate my congratulations to Alder Presley on being in this evening. Like I said, it's nice to have a full council. We've got a full agenda tonight, and obviously a lot of issues to tackle in the future, so good to be at full strength. Also, just wanted to touch on appointments. I know we might have some discussion on an appointee or two this evening. You know, there was an appointment made by myself during our last council that was rejected. In my mind, I think that was a mistake. You know, we don't, in my opinion, we shouldn't be making judgments about people's political beliefs, but rather their qualifications to serve the city on boards and commissions. I've made a lot of diverse appointments, politically and otherwise, to the boards and commissions that we have within the city. I think there's a good example tonight of somebody who actually ran against Alder Galvin. I'm sure Alder Galvin had a fair amount of disagreements with this individual. You know, I disagreed with some of the things that he said on the campaign trail, but believed that he would do good work for the city of Green Bay, and so I'm making that reappointment. So just asking council to keep my perspective in mind when making my decision. Obviously, you have the ability to confirm or reject these appointees, and I know you all take that very seriously. But again, I think that was not the right precedent to set when the appointee was rejected last time around, and I'm hoping with the new council, you'll make a different decision. So with that, we'll move along to announcements from our council. Any announcements? All right, onto appointments, reappointments being first. Entertaining motion on reappointments. Motion to approve by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to agree with the mayor. Dean Lasecki ran against me. I met him, I talked to him on several occasions. He's a bright young man, and I didn't necessarily agree with everything that he had to say during the campaign, but I also agreed that he cares deeply about this community. He wants to see it move forward, and I'm in favor of him being reappointed to the planning commission. I think he'll do a great job for the city as he's done in the past. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions on reappointments? Yeah, Alder Grant.
We received communications that people wanted to speak to this item. Is that correct?
On reappointments?
Oh, apologize, sorry.
All right, any further comments on reappointments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Those reappointments are made. Now we're on appointments. A motion? Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. Comments here? Alder Ek?
I just want to make a motion to open the floor.
All right, motion to open the floor has been made by Alder Ek, seconded by Alder Grant. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. First person I have here is Tamara Gasparic. And then just a reminder for those who'd like to speak, you have three minutes to address the council. All right, three minutes to address the council, and then just state your name and address for us.
Tamara Gasparic, 1897, Dipire, Wisconsin. And I'm here tonight to speak on the Equal Rights Commission appointee, Natalie Hoffman. She is currently in. She is currently an organizer of Citizen Action of Wisconsin. She's been that for two years to current. And this group and many similar groups will change the tapestry of our city and county and beyond. They advocate for defending our police. They want free college. They want free health care, among a long list of others. All of which are far stretched to what is good. It's chaotic and unfair to our citizens. I have firsthand knowledge of, a lot of people don't know a lot about free health care. I do. I have family in Canada. My niece had a, found a lump. She went to the doctor. It took three months to get in. After she had a biopsy, it took another three months, so for six months she waited to see if there was anything alarming. Her mother had a twisted bowel. They didn't rush her to the hospital, but they gave her morphine and watched her die. That is free health care. So that is something that a lot of these socialist groups and things that people advocate don't realize what these really truly are unless you've lived those things. Everything is more expensive under socialism. It's also, most people live in poverty because of that. They pay very, very high taxes, outrageously high taxes. Leaves very little money to live. Consumer goods cost more, and they are limited. This is a Canada model. People want to move to Canada, go to Canada. Health care is very costly. It's opposite of what the sales pitch is. It's fatal. To my family, three members, it was fatal. In fact, Lloyd, the father of the daughter and the grandmother, came to Chicago to have his heart surgery because he didn't trust the surgeons there under socialist medicine. So those are socialistic programs at large. I don't recommend, for the city of Green Bay, your vote of Natalie Hoffman. You will be responsible for the decline of the city of the things that they do advocate. Please do your research, and I hope that you will decline once again for the second time for her to committee. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Any questions?
Yeah.
Alder Galvin?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Do you know what the Equal Rights Commission's duties are?
I, they're various, I'm sure. There's.
Do they have anything to do with medicine?
I use that as an example of what, under socialism, I picked one thing that's under, something that she advocates for, that, that's what happens under socialism. It's not equalization for everyone. It's they tell you what you're going to do, because there's limited funds, and that's on pretty much every platform.
Do you know if the Equal Rights Commission has any access to dictating what funds are spent in the city?
I don't.
And lastly, do you understand that no matter what they recommend, the city council still has the final vote on what happens with any other recommendations?
I do.
Okay.
I just know that you will be, she will be an advocate for you. You will be listening to what her advice would be, and yes, you do vote on that, so I'm just saying, please be careful with that.
Thank you.
Alder Ek? Ma'am?
I just wanted to clarify because it sounded like one word, and I'm pretty sure that wasn't the word, but it sounded like you said they're for defending the police, so I just wanted you to clarify.
No, I said defunding the police.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
So is it your belief that by appointing Ms. Hoffman, she will have the power to change our landscape to a socialist landscape in the city of Green Bay?
There's a potential there if she is advocating to you her beliefs and what you are voting on. So she has that influence, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Next up is Seong Graham. And then just state your name and address for us, please.
Seong Graham, 2061 Sylvan Court, Green Bay, 54313. I'm going to start with a question. Why do we need Equal Rights Commission? According to its definition, I'm an Asian with a yellow skin, and therefore I'm an underrepresented minority. Many of my past jobs were teaching jobs at colleges and universities. All of those places have affirmative action, which refers to the policy to benefit marginalized groups. I fit that category, but I hated it. I wanted to be hired because of the ability that I can provide, not because of my ethnic background or skin color. I don't want any special treatment or a special group speaking on behalf of me. That makes me think that I'm not good enough to represent myself with my ability. How long and how much do we need to convince some of you that we don't need D E I or Equal Rights Commission? I have been living in the U.S. about 35 years. I went through becoming a permanent resident and then U.S. citizen. I am very proud of being an American and want to serve my community as best as I can because I receive the equal opportunities as all of you do, and accomplish the things that I could not have imagined of accomplishing even in Korea. I was treated with respect and was acknowledged for my talent and what I have to offer. In fact, for 35 years, I hardly thought about my race or skin color. I was just one of you. I was never looked at differently. That is why people want to come here, because we have equality which provides us with equal opportunities. It is the opportunities, not freebies. So as a legal immigrant, I am quite upset about illegals coming in and having all the necessary things and more provided right away without investing anything. That is a true unfairness and slap on legal immigrants. It took me about 10 years to become a U.S. citizen and thousands of dollars for possessing fees. Voting rights are very special and sacred to any citizens, especially those who went through the long legal process. So the possibility of giving that away like free candy is very upsetting as a Green Bay resident. Quote, "Democratic Socialists of America believes that working people should run both the economy and society," quote. That is right out of the communist philosophy. If anyone prefers that, they should go to North Korea or China and live there. I came here away from it and don't plan on making this country one of them. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thanks, ma'am. Next up is Eric Trzwicki.
Hi there. Eric Trzwicki, 632 South Roosevelt Street, Green Bay. Bear with me because I'm trying to thread a needle here that's tough to thread. You want to make sure that when you have these discussions, you don't impugn upon the character of the people that are being appointed. I think that that's very important. We can have ideological differences. I had coffee with Natalie shortly after she was voted down the first time, and I can tell you just from chatting with her, you'll be hard pressed to find a person with a kinder heart, I think, in this city. At the same time, I do have some concerns. I think if I look around this room, everybody here believes in representative democracy. But if we look at the present makeup of the Equal Rights Commission, I think we have something of an ideological monoculture on that commission. And I do think that is problematic, just because when proposals and ideas come out of the commission, they don't get really refined with internal adversity. It's sort of a group think. And then as a result, you end up having to do the refining in council, or you have to refer to staff and get them to do the refining. I do think there is an opportunity to add intellectual diversity. Presently, on the Equal Rights Commission, we have multiple people already who identify as democratic socialists or who are working with the Democratic Socialist Party of the United States. That is very disproportionate versus the makeup of our city. You know, to have maybe two, three, or even four members who are closely aligned with that on a small commission, well, you're not going to have that same ratio with the citizens of Green Bay. At the same time, I want to, again, temper my comments. I researched all of the people on the commission. I don't think there's a single bad person on that commission. I don't think the appointee is a bad person. I think these are fantastic people who are assets to our city, and we have to really draw those lines between those two things of saying, all right, we're not saying necessarily Natalie's a bad person, because I hope nobody here believes that, honestly, because if you meet her and talk with her, I challenge you to come to that conclusion because I don't think you would. But the question could be, is this the right fit for the Equal Rights Commission? Does the Equal Rights Commission have people on that who would balance it out sufficiently so that when ideas come forward, when proposals come forward, that they're palatable to the people of Green Bay? Or is it going to be too heavily tilted? We have seen areas in other municipalities where hard right boards come up with crazy, ridiculous ideas because they're all insulated with, they're all putting in mega people or whatever, and the ideas they come forward with are crazy. We don't want to have similar things happening on the opposite end of the spectrum. There were several things in the housing report that several alders here brought up as concerning. And if you look at some of the goals of the Democratic Socialists of America, rent control is a massive goal. And if those ideas get brought forward to council, that's a big thing to grapple with, because if you talk to developers, they're, you know, they'll be concerned. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Time's expired. Rent control not allowed under Wisconsin state law. Any questions? Alder Hutchison?
Are you aware there's an alder on the commission?
Absolutely. Joy, I think, is on the commission now. Congratulations, by the way.
I was on the commission the last two years, and I had ample freedom to address and make comments and edits to any report. Okay, so there is already, as you say, a counter maybe. I see it as a combination of just ideas. But what has, can you specify any specific thing? Because I was on the commission, and I was impressed with how they were not out to change the world. By far, they were concerned about the actual commission itself. They were concerned the common council would do away with them, okay? So they aren't under this notion that they can change the world at all. So I'm wondering, what specifically have they come up with that you see as a danger or, you know, something that doesn't jive with the city?
Sure. One example would be in the housing report that was provided. There was a lack of statistics provided from the city of Green Bay. There was a lot of extrapolation that what is happening in the city of Milwaukee therefore means it must be happening here. I do think that some of those things, as one of my professors at GB, UWGB stated, when you don't have statistics for your area, you get those statistics rather than projecting them from another area. And if you project them from an area, the area you choose sort of betrays the ideology. I wanted to stress in the response, I am not saying that this commission thinks that they can change the world or that they've got some sort of revolutionary hat on. I do believe the ideological makeup of the commission is concerning. I don't, I definitely do not believe the character of the individuals on the commission, including when you were on it, was concerning whatsoever. And if I did, I would have absolutely stated that.
Okay, but I would liken idea, what they presented gave you heartburn.
Sure. There was presentation that policing in Green Bay was a contributing factor to housing problems. That was actually challenged by some of the police force in Green Bay, that racial policing, I think making a statement that we have bad racial policing in Green Bay that's contributing to housing is not supported by facts. And having that out there creates a negative perception of the city. And we're ranked where we are for a reason. You know, that we do have high levels of equality. We do have great ratings on all of these benchmarks.
Right, and who made that statement? Who, where did that come from?
It was, it was within the housing report.
And who made it? I mean, did the commission say it, or was it something they heard the community say?
Well, they have the choice on what they put out in the report. So when they are saying that this is an issue by putting it out in the report, they're creating the perception that, because there are absolutely going to be things that you edit out when you take community input. If somebody comes in and says, you know, I've got pigs running in the street, you're not going to put that in the report. So if you've got reports that are saying we've got racist police, well, we should have data on that before we're putting that out in a report.
But they heard it. So they, I know this statement you're talking about. They, they heard it, and they thought about it, and it was thought, it was said, we got to put it in because we heard it. Now, what you're saying is we should edit what we hear, and the commission should edit it. So I'm concerned if we get people who want to edit what we hear, that's a problem. Because what we want to know is what the community is thinking. If we don't hear people from the range, we're going to think everything's cool, but it's not usually. So we want to hear that stuff, right? I mean, you're in favor of editing that out simply because we don't agree with it or it's not based on fact?
Well, I think the commissioner's report is a lot less effective if it is not based on fact. If it is simply reporting what we're hearing, then it becomes hearsay, which I don't think is an effective form of actually achieving change.
Well, part of the report had to display what we heard, what was heard by the commission. That was part of the mission of that report. So the commission wasn't saying it existed. They were just saying what they heard, okay? So that, you know, what you're telling me, though, gives me a bit of concern. If we have people on the commission then who want to edit that because it doesn't sound right, even though it's something they heard, that's a little bit on the other side, you know what I'm saying? So.
I can hear that. A footnote could have been added saying, you know, we did not find any statistics to corroborate these claims. We don't want to create a negative perception of the city that is untrue.
Right.
So, anyway, I'm not, and I want to stress, I mean no disrespect with this back and forth.
No, I totally understand, and I'm in favor of facts also, okay? I just wanted to put it straight while it was in there. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, Rocky Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, just a certain name and address in three minutes.
385 McCarthy Way, Rocky Rodriguez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I would like to express my gratitude to Ms. Natalie Hoffman for her dedication and service to the city of Green Bay, particularly in her efforts to promote affording housing for minorities on the Equal Rights Commission, the ERC. It is well known that minorities are often underrepresented, overlooked, ignored in Green Bay. This is why I stand before you today, a minority, to discuss Ms. Hoffman. It is crucial that the city council approves members who reflect the main initiative of the ERC, which is to promote equal housing opportunities for marginalized Green Bay residents. According to the ERC housing reports, the main groups represented by commissions are among African Americans, indigenous, Somali, Hispanic, and the LGBTQIA communities. However, I urge you to proceed with caution. Ms. Hoffman has previously submitted written testimony to the Wisconsin Legislature's Education Committee in which she described concerned Wisconsinites as disgusting and transphobic. Many of these concerned citizens were Green Bay residents representing the very marginalized groups that Ms. Hoffman aims to serve. Parents in our black and brown communities have expressed concerns about the safety of their children in public spaces with regards to having biological men undress in front of their daughters. Instead of helping the vulnerable young women of color, Ms. Hoffman dismissed these legitimate concerns. It is inappropriate for hypocritical for anyone, regardless of their race, city privileges, to dismiss the concerns of parents worried about their children's safety. A lifelong resident and trans woman, Monica testified before the same education committee stating that biological men should not undress to use women, undress or use women's private spaces, especially around young girls. Monica, who is a trans woman of color, faced violent backlash from the fringe minority of the Leftists associated with the Democratic Socialists of America, a group that Ms. Hoffman says she is proud to be a member of. I understand the value of dissenting opinions and political differences. I believe the makeup of board commissions should be diverse. We need to listen to each other, especially the concerns of marginalized. The ERC was established to serve. But I'm very concerned that the group Ms. Hoffman proudly stands with is too anti-American to justify, allowing her to serve without bias. She can't be trusted to provide housing for women and children when she doesn't believe in protecting their spaces. Will she properly represent American values when she believes in extending American rights to non-American citizens? Can you trust someone who resorts to insults instead of listening to legitimate concerns? If I were you, my answer would be a hard no. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? All right.
Go.
Next, I'm not sure if this is on this item. Myra, can't read the last name. Then if you could just state your name and address.
Yes, Myra Chant, 1558 Belmont Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54313. So I'm here to speak about Ms. Hoffman, who is running to be appointed for Equal Rights Commission. I recently found out that she is a proud member of the Democratic, Democratic Part, Democratic Socialists of America. And that raised a bunch of concerns for me, and as a member of, as a citizen of Green Bay or in the United States of America, I am truly concerned about some of the things that I want to address. Extend voting rights to all non-citizens. I became a U.S. citizen back in 2022, and I had to go through a lot of hard work, a lot of documentation and cost. I had to pay a lot of cost to become a citizen. So I have huge respect for American people and the system that I had to go through, because it is not supposed to be easy. Everybody should be going through the proper procedure to get citizenship, to become a citizen of the United States of America. I also did hear one of the videos, or listened to one of the videos, or watched one of the videos where I heard, and it was actually one of the commission meetings like last year, where Ms. Hoffman refused to say Pledge of Allegiance. She looked at the flag, and she refused to do that, and I think that that raises a concern for me because I'm a legal immigrant. And I think that that raises a concern for me because I'm a legal, legal immigrant. And extending voting rights to non-citizens raises, raises a concern in a way where, like, I can't, I can't even imagine. Just because it is a huge responsibility and somebody who is not aware of how Ameri, how America, American rules work, how our laws work, should not, they should have to go through the proper procedure of doing what they are doing. And they should have the respect to go through that procedure. Respect, if you don't respect the flag, if you don't respect the country, you are not going to be respecting the laws. And I think that, that is very big for me. So I just wanted to come out and say that, that I had this experience firsthand that everybody should be knowing what they are doing before they, before they vote for the president. And just to be clear, I think that a lot of, a lot of people that I've met, especially college students, they're not aware that it is illegal to vote for a president if you're not a citizen. So I just wanted to make sure that my voice was heard. And thank you so much for having me here. I mean, you got, you guys are representing Green Bay, representing us. So I want to make sure that because you guys are representing us, that you make an informed decision on who should be representing the city of Green Bay and how we grow as a community because we don't want it to see go downhill from here or anytime. Because we, we have to just really work hard. We are in those times that we really need to work together. And this is my appeal to you, that please make that, that decision, thinking about it and just make an informed decision for your people and for the United States of America.
Question, Alder Prophet.
Is it your belief that if Ms. Hoffman were to get appointed to this commission, she will extend voting rights to non-citizens in the city?
If, if she's advocating for it, she's definitely going to be talking about it and promoting it because she is basically, she's advocating for these things.
So she has the power to make that decision for our city?
I think we all have the power to do whatever we want to do when we, we are given that voice. We have the freedom of speech here in America. So we can use that voice to make big changes. So yes, if she's a part of the committee, Equal Rights Commission, then absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Anybody?
All right. Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor, made by...
All right, my name is Stephanie Guzman. Address is 2711 Equal Rights Commission. I am on it and I wish I had some sage to put somewhere around here because the fear mongering that's happening is insanity. You guys are all welcome to go to our meetings. They are public. We do not have them in secret. You can literally look up every single video of every single Equal Rights Commission meeting we've ever had. I will add that the fact that we have an alderman, absolutely, and not just him. We have the head of the HR department sitting at our table. Why do you think that is? It is so that he can answer any questions. It is so that we are not saying things that misrepresent the city of Green Bay. When we were on these commissions, I hope you guys don't think we're getting paid. That's hilarious. When we refer to staff, it is because they are getting paid. It is because it is a part of their job. We are not. We are there on a volunteer basis. Now, I do want to make sure that people understand, yes, it is amazing that we have diversity on that committee for the reason that we are supposed to be helping represent a lot of people in the community. A lot of people here might not know what it is to be not able to get an apartment because of the color of your skin. I love how there was someone up here who was like, "I'm a teacher. I really wish none of my siblings or nieces have you as a teacher ever" because the fact that you can sit and spit on the plight of so many people that are living in this city is literally something that you should be ashamed of. And if you're somebody who's representing us, I hope you can literally understand. These are in English. Where is Spanish? Where is Hmong, Somali? Until that day, you do not have the right to come here to say that there should be no Equal Rights Commission, okay? And so I want to make sure you guys understand. I am not saying that Natalie, that is a decision that the, that the committee has. That is how beautiful it is that we chose you guys to make those decisions. We are not going to be upset if all of a sudden, yeah, you turn me down. Any of the people that are sitting there, we understand, right? The, the political climate changes, but the truth does not. And that is that there is people out there who are not able to come here and speak the way I do to you because they do not speak the language, right? And so, no, English is not an official language. I will have that lady know as well. So until that day comes, Equal Rights Commission work is very important. And I support Natalie Hoffman being on this commission because she brings insight that we might not know because she's knocking on doors. My job is a psychologist. I work with sexual assault victims. When I have people come and tell me their story, I am not going to mute it because then I'm revictimizing them. You understand? And so it is important to have all kinds of, of perspectives. So we are being very well. There's a lot of red lines, guys. Don't think that we're spitting on them. We respect the system. We have, we literally have an HR person who literally made us go through training to know what we can say and we cannot say. And we are okay with that. And so I just want you to know, we are not here to fear monger or, or send to this committee, who we know has precious, limited time, a bunch of nonsense. We do care about what's getting sent down here, the quality of it. And so I just hope that you guys make a decision based on her expertise and not so much on the character. Because I will tell you right now, you do not want to go on my Facebook as a person because I'm going to have a bunch of carne asada. I'm going to have my beer that I drink. And I just hope that you don't judge me because I like Modelo over Corona, okay? So that is all I'm trying to say. Please, thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Question, Alder Weary?
Please don't judge me about that. Go ahead, go ahead.
Miller Lite. No, I'm kidding.
I love Miller Lite. Anyway, go ahead, go ahead.
No. Love your passion, Steph. You're always fearless in speaking. So my question would be, would you be opposed to someone on the committee having different views?
Absolutely not.
Operating a different angle, maybe being a devil's advocate?
You could even send me Campbell. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. I mean it. I mean it wholeheartedly. Let's do it.
I appreciate it.
Let's do it.
It's good to hear that.
Let's do it.
Steel sharpens steel.
I know, I know. I'm just saying.
I appreciate it, Steph. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. For, yeah, Alder Presley, question for Ms. Guzman?
Yes, please.
Having been on the Equal Rights Commission, do you think any of the socialist things that people are suggesting that she may try to enact on that commission are plausible?
We don't have any power. We are only advisory. We are literally just here to give advice, not, not just advice. We collect opinions from the community to make it faster, share it to you guys, and it's all on you. I'm sorry to give you that pressure, but it's the truth. We will share that information and know the socialist ideas. Please, watch her videos. We don't even bring up the word.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor, made by Alder Galvin.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. We have a motion on the floor. Yes, Alder Eck, on that motion.
Can I amend the motion to take each one up separately?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you make that motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion to take them each up separately.
All right. Alder Eck makes a motion to take these items separately, seconded by Alder Hinckfuss. Discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. The ayes have it. These items are separated. So first is Equal Rights Commission. Natalie Hoffman is the appointee. Motion to approve, made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Galvin. Discussion on that motion? We got a bunch. So Alder Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. I personally, this council, or many members of this council, did say that we, when we had the housing report come forward, that we wanted to see more input from a housing aspect or landlord aspect. And there are only so many seats on a commission. Personally, I think that would be very beneficial for conversation to have that spot filled by someone on that with, with that expertise. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Alder Morgan?
Well, first of all, I'd like to praise the people that did testify that have gone through the hard work of becoming citizens of the United States. I praise you. I think that's something that's hard to do and I'm glad you took the effort. Secondly, I'd like to say, I don't think our Equal Rights Commission is doing anything wrong. But when I see a lot of our agendas come through, I see so many times that we join them into one group and we pass them just to get done quicker, I think. I think we need to look at each thing individually. And if someone is on Equal Rights Commission, they are going to have things that they say that we are going to take as being truthfulness, even if it hasn't been researched. And that we're going to take a lot of our beliefs that they are doing the right thing and we may vote on something without even getting through it properly. And with that said, at our last time that Ms. Hoffman was here, I believe she's probably a very nice lady. I see she's got a great education. But I ran my campaign two years ago on public safety. And I was praised by a lot of people I talked to. We want our police to be strong. We want to give them every opportunity to survive on the streets and our fire. I would like to see us give more money to them, of course. But at the last time she came up here, she admitted that she believes these thoughts that police and public safety should be defunded. If not, have the police budget eliminated. That was one of the statements that time. So at this time, I have to say, I could not, in good faith, for what I promised my citizens, vote for someone that could have an opinion on our council. I will vote no for Natalie.
All right, Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for you. Did you receive any other applications for that position?
I wouldn't be able to say how many, but, you know, we regularly get people that, that submit their names and then they check multiple boxes. So I'm sure we do have a number of people that, that said they would be interested in serving.
Did you entertain any other names or was it the plan just to wait?
Not actively on this one, yeah.
Okay. You know, any, any committee or commission does carry some weight, you know, some more than others. But they, they do, you know, because you can say it was voted on and approved by whatever commission it might be. So it does, does carry some weight in any future dealings that we, we would have. It's all about, you know, what values do we want to promote and give voice to? And I think we even heard Steph say they wouldn't mind somebody on the committee being, maybe, you know, not averse, but maybe offering a different, different stance. And so I, I think it's good to try and avoid groupthink and an echo chamber. So for some of the other reasons, and for that reason, I'm going to vote no. And I'd really, I would like you to revisit, I know a gentleman who spoke tonight who put his name in and I think he'd be a great member of that committee. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck?
Okay, yes. So I, I was concerned last time and again this time about making it more balanced. And the defunding of the police was, was a huge thing for me and it continues to be. Something added when I was doing more research for tonight and going to the DSA website. There's a lot on there about backing all these protests that the colleges are doing that is promoting antisemitism. And if that's the case, it's basically, if you're equal rights, if you're for equal rights, you should be equal rights for everybody and not leave out one entire race, which is, of course, the Jews. So that, that's really very disturbing for me. So I'm going to vote no.
I would just say that's a very serious charge to make against someone.
It's on the website.
So you should think seriously before making an allegation like that about an individual.
Well, it's about the affiliation with the Democrat Socialist of America. It's on their website.
Hmm, okay.
So it's not an allegation about Natalie in particular. It's about the affiliation.
Any additional comments or questions? Alder Hutchinson?
There it is. I guess I'm going to vote yes for Natalie. I don't think we should be censoring any points of view at this point as a common council unless it's very egregious. Now, apparently, some people, apparently, the, the funding of police is an egregious thing. I see a lot of support for the police department on this common council. I think having a member of the Civil Rights Commission, possibly having the, the notion that maybe we don't fund everything for the police, isn't that threatening? As a matter of fact, it may be a counterbalance. I've pretty much voted for everything that the, the police department has, has asked for. I have major trust in the, the chief of police. But if someone has a different point of view, I don't think that's necessarily bad for the city. I think it's good for generating thought. So just on those things, I don't think that's a reason to keep Natalie from the Equal Rights Commission. She has attended a lot of common council meetings. She's attended a lot of Equal Rights Commission as a private citizen. She's never espelled socialism at these meetings, not once. So she's active. She's someone who's actively participating as a citizen at these meetings without a voice. And here she's asking for a voice. She's already spent a ton of time at these meetings. I think she's earned the right to be on the commission. So I'm voting yes.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Presley?
Yeah, I am voting yes to approve Natalie Hoffman to the Equal Rights Commission. I think that we have blown this way up and we're looking at very high level things about protests. We're looking at things about healthcare and police that are not going to be dealt with on this commission. We cannot judge somebody based on their political views when considering a commission appointment. I think that's akin to judging somebody based on their religion. What do their personal views have to do with what they're going to do as a commissioner, as a member of a commission? I think Natalie Hoffman is a very engaged citizen, somebody who has been engaged with local politics, who ran for office, who listens to people, is part of a job, whose role is to listen to people and voice their concerns. If we are unhappy with the concerns, if there are citizens out there who believe there is discrimination, that they are not seeing the housing that they need to be equal, if they are unhappy with police, that is still a voice that needs to be heard. And Ms. Hoffman is somebody who I, I fully trust to engage with that voice and listen to that voice and make a report. That, again, is not binding, that is not rulemaking, but is advisory. And I trust Ms. Hoffman to do this and I believe that we all should. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions? Alder Hinckfuss, then Alder Galvin?
I'm going to support the recommendation of Natalie Hoffman. First of all, this is the second time you've recommended her. And I think Alder Hutchinson, you convinced me. You talked about what happens on the commission, the people that are on the commission, the fact that it comes back to all of us to approve, to ask questions. And this woman, it sounds like she's out there. I don't know who she is. I wasn't here for any of the last discussion. But it sounds like she's passionate about what she's doing and I think with the processes we have in place, we can do that.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure if it's something about me or the mayor's got something against me, but this is the second person that's run against me for counsel that is appointed to a committee.
Nothing personal, Alder, yeah, I swear.
But I, and that's how I first met Natalie, was two years ago when she ran against me. She's bright, energetic, cares about this community. Do I agree with her politics? Just like Mr. Lasekki? Not necessarily. And I think we are extrapolating a lot of things onto her based on this group that she belongs to. I don't think anyone here could name any other person on this reappointment or appointments where you know what their political parties are or how they vote or anything else. Yet because one person was brave enough to tell us and put down on her, on her form that she belongs to this party, we're focusing on her and we're attributing a lot to her that is not necessarily true. And I think if someone was to sit down to her and go point by point through the socialist program, I think you would find that she doesn't necessarily agree with everything that they espouse. But that's the thing, when we start dragging politics into something that is about our community, and it's not all about politics. It's not about Republican. It's not about Democrat. It's about what's going to move this city forward and make this a good community for all of us to live in. I had wanted to vote before. I unfortunately was unable to. And, but tonight I will be voting for Ms. Hoffman. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. All right, anything final? Alder Prophet?
I would just like to commend Ms. Hoffman for being willing to go through this again. I think as a young person myself who put myself out here to run for office, it's a really hard thing to do. And I would just caution this council, the standard that we're setting for other citizens. If there are other people in this community who want to serve for free, as mentioned by a commissioner, our city, this is a standard we're setting right now in our vote. She is one of what will be nine people on this commission and I would hate to see other young people, people of different backgrounds, people of different political beliefs. I would hate to see someone discouraged from choosing to serve our political beliefs. I would hate to see someone discouraged from choosing to serve our community because of what we put her through last time. And I commend her for being willing to come up here again, and I will be voting in favor for Ms. Hoffman.
Thank you. Any other comments? For a second time, Alder Morgan?
I just had a question from...
Mike, Alder Morgan?
Can people that are on the commission vote on who can be on there?
Membership, Alder Morgan?
No, to vote on, yeah.
You're asking about the alder representation?
Yes, the alder representative. Are they allowed to vote on that?
Members of the commission are appointed and then confirmed by the...
I think Alder Morgan is asking about the alder who serves on the commission, whether or not they can vote on this appointment. That's always been the practice.
Yes. Do you have a point?
No, I'm reading for, I'm in different voting things, but I haven't found the part that I thought I saw in that.
I can check while you finish debate to confirm that if you'd like.
Okay, I think the debate's done, but...
Yeah, I would just say that's always been the practice of this body. There hasn't been any abstentions from alder members of different boards and commissions. Any final comments or questions? Alder Grant?
One last point I do want to make is when we talk about the tone that we're setting, I also want to commend all the people that apply for these commissions aren't even considered because of their beliefs. We have people applying to these and aren't even being interviewed or considered. So I commend those people as well, and that's the standard we're setting. We are asking for diversity of experience, and that's not what we're giving them. Thank you.
All right. Anything final?
Can we use the board?
Yes. Request has been made by Alder Galvin for a roll call vote on this, so we will do so.
You may vote. Mr. Presley, have your vote. Is it not coming up?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jali, Alder Jali? Thank you.
It's eight to four with Alder Presley voting in the affirmative?
Yes.
All right, that appointment is confirmed by our council. Now, along to Green Bay Plan Commission, we have two appointments there. First one is Emma Full Wilder. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Presley. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it. That appointment has been made on to Kelsey Lutzo, also Plan Commission. Motion to approve by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hinkvis. Discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it. And we are done with appointments. Ordinance is second reading for adoption.
Hold.
Suspend.
Hold the rules and take it.
Alder Eck makes motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote.
What's on there?
Seconded by Alder Hinkvis. Seconded by Alder Hinkvis, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Alder Galvin?
Former Alder Scannell seems to think that transit should have also...
It was.
Sorry, we appoint...
It was in the wrong space, but it was on there. So the rules are suspended. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley. And we will, any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
You may vote. Mr. Presley, how would you like people to vote? Thank you.
You're good. Yeah, you're done. It was in the wrong spot.
Mr. Jali?
Yes.
It's not coming up? Okay. Mr. [inaudible]. That is, you may disqualify, Mayor.
Absolutely.
You may disqualify.
Okay. All right, and those ordinances are adopted unanimously. On to the report of the Improvement and Services Committee.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Prophet. Items here to be handled separately? Any items to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Report of the Protection and Policy Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Prophet. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to note that I'll be... Liquor license for the Green Bay Blue Ribbons.
Oh, very good.
Seeing as I am the Assistant General Manager and Coach.
All right, that will be noted. Alder Morgan. So we had a motion and a second. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, that report has been approved. Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses? Motion to approve by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder De Lee. Abstentions here or names to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, that committee has, or report has been approved. On to, report of the Plan Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley. It looks like we do have an individual who'd like to speak on item three. If we, yeah, if we could pull that item. Alder?
And six.
Three and six, we have folks. Okay, so we have folks for three and six. If we could handle this separately?
Aye.
Three, five and six will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none, others, all in favor of the remainder of that report will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it. Our report has been approved with the exception of items three, five and six. Your wishes on item three?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Hutchinson. That item was pulled by Alder Eck. Want to open the floor here?
Oh, yeah.
Alder Eck makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder De Lee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, the floor is open, and we have Jennifer Olson who'd like to speak on this. And just a reminder, if you could just state your name and address, and then you have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Jennifer Burkhart Olson. I'm a resident at 1736 Bond Street. My wife and I live there. She's here with me tonight. We are here to speak on the zoning request that was made for the Wisconsin building supply behind our home. I brought up some concerns at the meeting on April 29th about the railroad cars that run behind our home, about the noise that comes from the lumberyard after 10 o'clock at night. We have concerns about rezoning that property, how it will increase traffic to there. It'll increase railroad deliveries to there, how the noise will increase because the noise really isn't being in check right now. I know there's light violations because their lights from their lumberyard shine into our properties along that street. And also, recently, I made complaint about the railroad cars behind our home. It's two railroad cars. And right after I complained about them in that open meeting, they are suddenly gone. And the plant manager claims to have no knowledge of these railroad cars, no knowledge of plant deliveries of the railroad station when they make deliveries to us plant. I can know when Amazon's going to be on my doorstep in 10 stops, so I find it hard to believe that you can't tell me when a train is coming to your plant to deliver something that you have arriving. So I feel like us, those of us in our district that have this rezoning going on, my highness, something's fishy. Something's adding up. I don't understand the railroad cars, how they've suddenly disappeared. I would like answers about what's going on at that property before that rezoning gets approved because something doesn't seem right about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your testimony. Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other folks who'd like to testify on this item in particular? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close the floor.
Assistant General Manager.
Yep, feel free to, yes, absolutely. Just approach the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak to council.
My name's Mike Patrino. I'm the plant manager at the 1745 Marion Terrace Facility that you just mentioned. I do not control the railroads. We've been waiting for like six weeks to get cars pushed into our site, and they happened to get pushed in the week after. We have our planning commission meeting, and they pulled out the two cars that weren't even ours. But, so rest assured, if I could control it, I certainly would. I don't have control of the railroad business. We've got 102 employees at a location. We're not changing anything. We're doing the same business we've been doing for 20-some-plus years there. It's just rezoning, doing the same thing we've always been doing. So just want to state that.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for our guests?
I have a question.
Alder De Lee?
With moving to light industrial, will you increase hours of operation at all at the plant or expand?
The hours will not change. We have two shifts now, about 20 hours a day, every day, so that won't change at all. There is potential future expansion of the building itself. We do service the whole state of Wisconsin. We're proud that all the trusses come out of Green Bay for Wisconsin Building Supply, because we've got yard locations out of Marinette, Merrill, we've got Appleton, Fond du Lac, Sussex, Windsor, Onalaska, which near La Crosse, Plover, Center to State. So we service all our yards throughout the state through, from that facility. So we do a lot of business from there. Not only are we supporting 101 employees that I have at our location, we're supporting all our business throughout the state, supporting the economy of Wisconsin. So, but yeah, we may expand the building, but it's only to continue to produce the product of our building.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Alder Presley?
I have a question.
Just one more question, sir.
Have you done anything to address the light and noise complaint since those were first brought up at the Plan Commission?
Yes, we have. In fact, just Monday here, ADVOS come in, readjust our parking lot lights, put visors on the parking lot, our maintenance light, and we have some lights in the back that are our pick line, which have been there for several years, but now they're obviously coming up as an issue. And we're addressing those, and we understand the concern. If I lived there as well, I wouldn't want it in my backyard as well. So we're doing the best we can to do that. We put two more visors on today. I'm diligently doing that, so trust me, I'm working to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Alder. Thanks for your testimony. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Presley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, floor is closed. We had a motion to approve and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Alder De Lee?
I feel like with this subject, from a lot of the neighbors that I've talked to about it, and I heard from multiple people today, Jen came tonight to talk about, on it, and I've talked to Jen quite a bit. I feel like there's a lot of unanswered questions when it comes to this rezoning. And I know that there were lighting concerns that they're working on. There's been noise complaints that they've continued. There was some misunderstanding of where the train cars were from. But until there were, until there's some real definitive answers on what the purpose of rezoning to light industrial from business, I'm not, I would almost like to table this subject until we could have some final discussion on that.
Okay, thanks, Alder. I would invite staff maybe just to talk about, at least from, you know, city's perspective, what this zoning change will allow for this particular business or, you know, what the argument was, I guess, to make this rezoning. So we'll go to our zoning administrator, Mr. Leroy.
Thank you. So when it came to this property, it's approximately 16.275 acres that the existing site is on, and there's some other parcels that are also owned by Mbar LLC. The existing zoning is BP Business Park. The comprehensive plan calls for this to be LI Light Industrial, and it's adjacent to other properties that are LI Light Industrial. The use that's been going on here with the outdoor storage dates back before 2005, and we generally take that as our cutoff as far as grandfather over the course of time. So the use with the outdoor storage has been occurring for 20-plus years since this existed. So as staff, we looked at that with the comprehensive plan calling for this area to be light industrial, and with the existing use out there being de facto light industrial, and it being adjacent to light industrial properties, that it made sense for the group to come forward and ask for rezone on the property. Now, if they are to do any improvements to the property, i.e. expanding outdoor storage, they'd have to come forth with a site plan that meets current code, and that generally includes buffer spaces along public right-of-way sidewalks, things of that sort.
Got it. Okay, thanks for that. Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from council?
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Johnson?
Yeah. I just wanted to kind of point out, I think that there's a, you know, a difference between sort of a rezone and ordinance enforcement. And so if we have, you know, concerns about lighting not being in compliance with our ordinance or sound, I think there's a different mechanism to address that, and it's typically not zoning. I mean, obviously zoning has rules, but it's our inspectors, right, that handle that. And I would just make a point about the railroad. We have absolutely no jurisdiction over the railroad. And I think is something that a lot of folks will learn, is that it's very frustrating at the local level. But that is a reality. And so I'm not sure that tabling this, referring or holding it really will get us any more information than what's already at hand, so I'm comfortable voting on it. But while at the same time encouraging us to obviously deploy inspectors where appropriate if there are violations of our existing ordinances.
Thanks, Alder. Just on that, Director Roonier Wig, I'm imagining you have something you'd like to say, but then also if you could just sort of address what Alder Johnson was suggesting, just to inform folks of how one might inform us of a complaint that you have.
That is exactly what I was going to say. He stole my thunder.
There you go.
This is actually something the inspectors are working on right now, the lighting. So they've been going back and forth. We have certain codes addressed with the lumens and the lighting, so we are on that already as far as inspection goes.
Okay, got it. And just for new folks or the general public, how would one file a complaint if they're interested in...
Yep, you can go online, you can go on a request for service, and you can anonymously file a complaint about, you know, a lot of things, I guess, for any, with regards to the city, but certainly for any housing inspection issues or business inspection, commercial inspection. You're free to do that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from Alders? Alder De Lee, did you have a motion that you'd like to offer?
None.
Okay, all right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it, and that motion has been approved. We're now on to item five. Let's approve the request for conditional use permit to create a restaurant with drive-through in a CI general or GI general commercial district at the 3,000 block of Finger Road, subject to the following conditions, and those are listed. Entertain a motion here.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Weary. This item, I think, was pulled by Alder Eck as well.
I'm looking over this Alder Hutchinson.
Alder Hutchinson pulled this one?
Yeah, I believe there was communication regarding this agenda item regarding a wall. And I'm not familiar with it. I just saw the communication.
Yeah, that's right. You mean a comment?
There was a comment form?
Yes, there was. That person did not...
I'm not here.
Oh, no, sorry.
Mayor Alder Johnson here. I think I pulled this item. I think Alder Hutchinson might be referring to the next item.
Oh, okay. Are you talking about the QuickTrip, Alder Hutchinson?
I'll, you think you pulled item five, Alder Johnson?
I did, unless you beat me to it.
Well, you can have the floor if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if when you mentioned the wall, if you're referring to the QuickTrip property, because that's where the wall was discussed.
Oh, is that the one?
That's the one.
Oh, I thought it was the wall on five. So I may have accidentally pulled the wrong one.
That's all right. Any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, Mayor?
Yeah, Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd move to make an amendment to strike the provision that any signage facing northwards Finger Road shall not be illuminated.
Got it. So Alder Johnson makes that amendment, striking the sixth condition. That was seconded by, so you, Alder Galvin? Seconded by Alder Galvin. Discussion on that?
Yeah, I would just speak to that if I could, Mayor. It's, I know this is something, it was very briefly discussed at Plan Commission. Honestly, I think the commissioners went over it pretty quickly. It was a long meeting, and they were probably tired. But I think that this is a burden that I haven't seen ever put on a business before. I think the concern here is whether or not lighting would perhaps... concern here is whether or not lighting would perhaps, you know, shine into windows of neighboring properties. I think that's a legitimate concern if you're talking about car lights, but when you're talking about kind of an innocuous sign, you know, that's on the side of a building, I think this is pretty harmless, and I think it's important for a business, particularly one that opens up in the morning before the sun comes up. I think people need to be able to see that they're open, that they can visibly see the business. Any of you that have driven by a business, you see they all have signs. They're all lit up. I've never seen one that shines into a property. So, I'd like to strike this provision and at least put this business on a fair playing field, so people know they're open.
Thanks, Alder. On the amendment, Alder Hutchinson?
Yes. To that point, Alder Johnson, the sign facing north would be facing the homes to the north. It wouldn't be facing any traffic to the south on Mason Street. And I think there was concern that the light would be intrusive to those people living right across the street. Finger Road, everything to the north of Finger Road has just built up its homes. Everything to the south where this development is, is going to be that development. So, the concern was facing north, the sign on the north side facing north is just going to be looking at homes, and they already know it's there. They don't need the sign. So, I think that was the point of this item. So, I would be against changing this, but people can listen and do what they want.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions? Alder Eck?
I was just wondering if we could get staff to weigh in on that, please.
Sure. Any comments from staff on that condition?
Yeah, staff didn't initially put this into the report as far as a recommendation for this. And the sign issue is not something that's brought up. If this was directly adjacent to residential area, sign should not be allowed, but it is across the street.
Okay. Got it. Alder Eck? Anything further?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, we have that amendment. It was a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it.
Motion to approve is amended.
Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Galvin. Discussion here. Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been approved as amended onto item six. And that's to approve a conditional use permit to allow the use of a fuel gas service station, convenience store, and car wash facility in a community center commercial district. Motion here.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder DeLee, seconded by Alder Prophet. And then we do have, yes, someone who'd like to speak on this item. Before we open the floor, just want to make sure this individual's here. Deborah Lees, or Lees? She said she'd like to speak regarding the wall on Gross Avenue and Gross Court. Also like to speak regarding restricting hours of deliveries, but not here in person. Just checking to make sure. Not here online either. Ms. Deborah Lees? Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this item from council?
Mayor?
Alder Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to check with staff, obviously looking at the provisions that Plan Commission put on there. You know, one of the bits of discussion really kind of centered around the separation from Gross Court. Obviously, supported removal of that ingress egress, that driveway there. You know, I think it was kind of left up to the discretion of the property owner about the screening, meaning masonry wall fence, berm plantings, or some combination thereof. You know, one of the points of discussion was that a berm would do a much effect, much more effective job at absorbing some of the sound before it hits the residential neighborhood. Curious if staff has an opinion on that.
Mr. Leroy?
Yeah. So, we were referring back to the code itself, where it's a combination of wall fence, berming, planting. And understandably, with a wall or fence, it would likely have a better impact of keeping that noise inside of the property itself compared to a clumping of landscaping, which may be lessened in the winter months when foliage happens. So, in light of the comments that have been received from neighbors over the course of the past few months, I can see how a wall or fence being 100% opaque and a, without any sort of passageways could make sense on this.
Do you have?
Okay, is?
Go ahead, Alder Johnson.
Yeah, is it possible, you know, we talked about the QuickTrip that's located over off University Avenue, you know, and how they had kind of just one little sidewalk entrance that connected to the residential neighborhood? Is it possible to mandate that within this process?
This is a conditional use permit, so it would be allowed. Yes, you could do that.
Okay. And then, when you're in that, along Gross Court there, it, when you loop around Gross Court, there's no sidewalk there. Can that also be mandated as part of this process?
Uh, yes, it can be in this process. Yes.
Yeah, because right now you've got a sidewalk that ends on Gross Court, right? And now you're going to actually have a reason for pedestrian traffic to occur there, whereas right now there really isn't that, that need. Just, is there any other staff feedback on? Because I don't think that was really discussed at Plan Commission.
So, it could be a condition is what Mr. Leroy is saying potentially, but I was wondering if Director Grineer, if you have any thoughts about procedurally how that would happen?
Well, I'd like to get some more information here aerially about what sidewalks there are in the neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Leroy?
Yeah, I'll note that a parcel 2-1263, which is a neighboring residential property, there is no sidewalk in front of that property, so there would be a gap between a sidewalk along the north side of the property connecting back to as Gross Court curves around and is the east side of Gross Court. There is a sidewalk on the south side of the block, or the southern block, on the north, south side of Gross Court, and then the west side of Gross Court, as that curves from, on the north part of the block and the east part of the block.
Okay. Anything further, Director?
As Mr. Leroy indicated, aerial view does indicate that south side of Gross Court does have sidewalk. As you go to the east and Gross Court heads to the south, at the corner, there is sidewalk on the, on the west side. As we head south beyond the first property on the east, there's also a sidewalk on the east. So, Gross Court does have pedestrian connectivity back to the west to Gross Avenue, and then Gross Avenue has sidewalk heading north up towards Mason Street. There is adequate pedestrian coverage getting the neighborhood connected to this proposed development. So, I don't share any concerns relative to a lack of pedestrian accommodation. And as there's accommodation on the, where the population density currently exists on the south side of Gross Court, I don't see a reason why there would be a necessity to have additional sidewalk on the north side of Gross Court behind the proposed development.
Okay. And then, one final question, Mayor. The, I believe the person who put their information to speak, at least had a question about delivery hours. You know, I've heard, I haven't spoken to that person in particular about what their thinking was on that, but I think we've put that condition on other CUPs in the past. Is there anyone from staff that could at least speak to what level of restriction perhaps exists on similar types of CUPs in our community?
Are you thinking of Maple, the QuickTrip on Maple potentially?
Yeah, I think Maple does. I'm not sure if there are others, but...
Yeah.
So, I'm just looking for some perspective on it.
Yeah. Any response there?
Well, we looked at ours. Our biggest concern was the car wash and the noise that emits from that. As staff, we were discussing this. This did not come up as a concern, primarily because the idea of, I believe when we're discussing this, the idea that the southern part of the property would have the lack of a drive extension back out to the south and the buffering that the code provides between the residential properties.
Okay. Got it. Alder Johnson, motion?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. Just one more question, because I know this was important to someone that was talking about, and Alder Weary had actually brought this up at Plan Commission, about the wraparound to Gross Avenue for some level of screening. The way that this is proposed, if I'm understanding correctly, does not have that requirement. Is that accurate?
Mr. Leroy?
I don't believe so. I believe the updated CUP notes that the wraparound will go up to the southern entrance of Gross Avenue within the code, primarily speaking to vision triangles as you...
Oh, yeah. Sorry. There it is. I see it. Thank you, John.
All right.
Okay. I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any motion?
Uh, no, I think my concerns have been adequately addressed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Seeing none. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Onto the report of the Finance Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hutchinson. Items here to be handled separately. Hearing none. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Report of the Park Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Prophet. Items here to be handled separately. Alder Hinkfuss?
I don't know if it's to be handled separately, but I'd like to comment on the place and file and review of the Bay Beach amusement rides. In number 12, in listening to the meeting, we're, from a neighbor's perspective, we're raising the prices 50% on a few of the rides, and we're raising prices 33% on another subsection of rides. We're allowing the toddler rides a couple of days a week. They could come in and use them for free, and I think that's absolutely awesome. But in the spirit of that park, I think an increase of 50% is absolutely ridiculous. If we went to the grocery store and our bread went up 50% tomorrow, all of us here would be having a fit. And the statement was made that this does not have to come through council, because technically, we're not raising prices. Well, if I'm going to go on the zip and pippin last year for a dollar, and this year I'm going on it for a dollar 50, that is a rise in price for, for me as a non-Alder. So, I, I went to a meeting right after I was elected of the Parks Committee, and one of the statements that was made is that Bay Beach is funded by itself. It's self-funded itself. It's wonderful. And then the next park meeting I went to, all of a sudden, we need to raise rates 50%. And I would ask that we go, that you and the team go back and reconsider. I just, I think 33% increase on a huge amount of rides and 50% on another is, I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah. If the bread was a dollar and it was going to $1.50, I don't think I'd have an issue. But Director Anderson, do you have any comments just on, on the process or the thought, you know, thoughts involved when, when folks were coming up with the new plan for rides?
Well, I think Director Ditchite in the meeting at the Parks Committee, he put together the timeline of when the last time we rose prices were. I think, don't quote me, but I think it was 2002. So, if you look at it from that aspect, you know, if you're using the bread analogy, I would say if you didn't raise bread prices for 21 years or 22 years, and then you had to bump it up a little bit, it'd probably be, you know, 50% possibly. I think we're just trying to keep up with, I mean, we're trying to keep up with the cost it takes to run the park and also come out, you know, and with the profit, so we can actually invest it back into the park. And also, I think you commented as well as on the lease that's, or the financing that's going to be refinanced in 2026 and other things that, so we're kind of looking ahead to the next couple of years and how we strategize and how to make sure we have enough to sustain the master plan and what's going on at Bay Beach.
Right. Okay. The comments. Alder DeLee?
I know one big thing I took away from it was the fact that they had a hard time getting college help because of what the wages were for the college students. And raising, raising that rate will help with being able to fully staff Bay Beach.
Right. Yeah, just on that, I mean, I think the number that I heard from some senior staff out at Bay Beach was, I think wages were about $8 an hour when, when that last change was made. Obviously, wages now are closer to $15 an hour or higher. So, so that's 100% roughly increased there. But Alder Prophet?
Yeah, and I'd just like to state the, the only, there's only one that's going 50% increase, and it's going from 25 cents to 50 cents. And then the other few that were raised at that 33 are going from 75 cents to a dollar. And I just, I'd like to commend staff on the $1 ticket rides being free on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Because as a mom of toddlers, I will personally be taking off work to be able to take my kids there. And I think the intent is, well, then we're going to do some other things while we're there that aren't the $1 or the 25 cent, because they're the one-ticket rides. So, I think it's a creative solution to try and address. I don't think it's going to be a huge financial burden for families.
Thanks. Alder Presley, and then Alder Grant?
Yeah, from what I've heard from constituents and community forums, people seem to be in favor of this. It's a little extra cost for something that is still very, very affordable to make sure that we continue to have this valuable community resource. So, you know, I don't, I don't have any issue with the increase.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant?
And I've spoke to Director Ditchite about this, but another idea maybe to consider, because I know we want to really keep this park affordable for residents. I don't know if it's ever been thought about to even do a day pass for Green Bay residents only, where it's unlimited rides or a respite or a season pass kind of thing, limited to Green Bay residents. And I don't know how, if that would affect cost, help, hurt, but maybe that's kind of an alternative to help our own residents. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hutchinson?
One quick comment. I love the idea, trying to keep the costs where they are, but I, it wasn't that long ago. It wasn't this administration, but there was a talk about privatizing that park, and it scared me to death, because then we would have ticket increases big time. So, if this step helps the city maintain the self-containment of Bay Beach, I guess I would support it, but I like the idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments?
Mayor?
Yeah, Alder Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Alder Galvin and I spoke about this a little bit yesterday, too, and, you know, obviously acknowledging this is an informational item today. And I appreciate the mayor's leniency with allowing us to kind of go off typical procedure and just talk about it right now. One of the things that I would recommend, I think philosophically, I disagree that this is not a price increase. I do see it as that, even though, you know, technically, it's just charging more tickets. And I do think that to not have any level of council oversight of this is a mistake. It is a fee, and, and we address in our fee schedule every single year what our fees are going to be for different city services. And I do think that this item should be included. And I also support, though, the acknowledgement that prices are increasing for the operation of the park, and we need to be cognizant of that. And I think we need to get ourselves into a position where we're reviewing this annually and not once every 20 years, so that we don't have to be looking at a 50% or 33% rise. And so, I would recommend, though, that we, there is another venue for this, and I would suggest perhaps if Alder Hinkfuss wants to do this, since she brought it up, but a direct communication, you know, that maybe addresses the procedure with how Bay Beach prices are evaluated every year and gives council a little bit more oversight on this, because I think that would at least address, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Alder Hinkfuss, but I think that would at least address the primary concern that I think you're raising here.
Thanks, Alder. Anything further on that, Alder Hinkfuss?
No, but thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and I, you know, Alder Johnson, you did reference the conversation that we had yesterday with Alder Galvin. So, I did flag this for Deputy City Attorney Cochart, and her suggestion is obviously in line with what you just suggested. So, I think it would be a good discussion to have at, at a future committee meeting. So, with that, I don't think we have any items to be handled separately. So, to adopt the report of the Park Committee, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Report of the Personnel Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. Items here to be handled separately?
One and four.
One and four. One and four will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none others. All in favor of the remainder of that report will signify. Hearing none others, all in favor of the remainder of that report will signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one and four. On item one?
As Alder Eck pointed out before, that's incorrect information on there. Alder Grant was not elected the vice chair of the Personnel Committee. It was Alder Johnson.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend it.
Alder Galvin makes a motion to amend. The vice chair election for Personnel Committee, we have a second on that? Seconded by Alder DeLee. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Entertained a motion to approve as amended? Motion to approve as amended made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. That item has been approved as amended. Now on to item four. Your wish is here. Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Eck. Item was pulled by Alder Galvin.
Sorry, Your Honor. Just that recommendation from the committee was for staff to proceed as directed. There wasn't anything real in-depth or anything else going on during that discussion.
Okay. So you're making that motion now?
Yes.
Okay. So Alder Galvin makes a motion to direct staff to proceed as discussed at the committee level. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Eck. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Onto Public Arts Commission. Motion to approve by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Presley. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Report of the Traffic, Bicycle, and Pedestrian Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Prophet. Item's here to be handled separately. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Sustainability? Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Resolutions? I'd entertain a motion to suspend. Yep. Alder Eck makes a motion to suspend these, the rules and take up these resolutions with one roll call vote. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The rules are suspended. Motion to approve made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Presley. Any discussion here? Seeing none, roll call is required, so we will use the board.
Vote.
Presley's aye?
Yes, thank you.
Prophet's aye?
It hasn't come up for me.
Is anybody a no?
Okay, so Mark Paul is yes. Thank you.
All right, whoops. And those are approved unanimously. Onto ordinances first reading? Entertained a motion to suspend the rules if that's what you would wish? Oh, got it. Oh, boy. This'll be fun. Motion to suspend the rules on items two through five and take them up with one roll call vote? Yeah, take up one and then two through five. Uh, motion?
Motion to suspend the rules and take up numbers two?
Yes. Alder Eck makes that motion to suspend the rules. It was seconded by Alder Prophet. All in favor will say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. So the rules are suspended for two through five. We'll take up item one first. Is there a motion there? Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Stevens. Alder Galvin, you pulled it?
Thank you. This is for Attorney?
Attorney Cochart?
I was going to say Cochart, yes. I listened to the minutes. I understand why we pulled squirrels from protecting them because the state has a statute that overrules our ordinance. My concern is, and there were even some comments that yay, now squirrels aren't protected anymore. And my concern is even going around knocking on doors, I got neighbors talking about neighbors putting holes in the sides of their house because they're shooting at squirrels with high-powered pellet guns. So I just wondering.
That's not allowed.
That's definitely not allowed, but I'm just afraid that if we don't get the word out along with this that it's still not okay to go out and wipe out the squirrel population. So I'm just wondering if we have anything in place to get that out along with this.
All right. Maybe Attorney Cochart, you could just kind of explain what is permitted once this ordinance is adopted, or even under state law, I guess.
Sure, so I recognize that this seems like a sort of an odd issue, but we were contacted by the Department of Natural Resources. I think a resident contacted them because there is a hunting season for squirrels, so we're preempted by state law to allow people, there's a hunting season for gray and fox squirrels, I think. Anyway, so we were contacted multiple times by the DNR, sought to address this issue of removing them from this protection. This doesn't, however, allow people to discharge firearms in the city to remove squirrels, so they're still subject to the firearms prohibitions. That's just not in this particular section in terms of protection. So I think what Alder Galvin's referring to is discharging various weapons to actually eliminate squirrels, which would be prohibited under other parts of Section 26. But we're just removing them from protection so that if someone does choose to hunt them or some other form that's allowed by state law, they can do so.
And most common form of that would be trapping, probably, or?
Well, actually, I think most people are allowed to use crossbows when they hunt in the city. I'm not sure about trapping requirements, but I don't know anyone shooting squirrels with crossbows, but perhaps you do, Alder Galvin?
Actually, you can use, yeah. Mostly people use shotguns, but I mean, if they wanted to use that. But the thing is, we allow hunting of deer within the city limits.
We do.
And so, but people would, we make those individuals go through permitting and everything else before they can even do that. And then they're actually assigned sections that they could do it in. There might be some outlawing properties. I don't think that would be allowed even there, though. I mean, even if you had a farm just barely inside the city limits. But I just, I didn't want the word getting out that it was open season on squirrels and we're going to start seeing squirrel tails hanging off of bicycles as kids ride down the streets and all those other things that went on years ago, so.
Those were some dark days.
Yes, especially for the squirrels.
Yeah.
So people can hunt deer on their properties, Alder Galvin, with crossbows and things like that. They don't need special permission as long as they have a license from the state and they follow our ordinance requirements, which are notification to neighbors and a couple of other things. But maybe Chief Davis has a comment about alerting people to the use of firearms in the city.
We can certainly work with the city attorney's office to put out some public messaging around that issue if we need to.
All right.
That's all I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So we had a motion and a second on that. All in favor will say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. That ordinance has been advanced. Now on two through five. Motion to advance made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Those ordinances are advanced to a second and final reading. Petitions and communications. Adjournment? Motion to adjourn made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.